I will now call it December 7, 2015, Blue Springs City Council Meeting Order. If you would, stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and we have Troop 692 from the American Legion will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance when I give them the signal.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated, and thank you, Troop 692, and come back and see us again. Want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might watch, listen to the audio at a later time to tonight's City Council meeting. Next, we have the consent agenda. Are there items that need to be pulled, or not accepted motion for approval?
So moved.
Sir, second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation of the Blue Springs School District regarding Entrepreneur Program. Dr. Segal.
Thank you very much for allowing me a few minutes on your agenda tonight. I brought gifts, not to bribe you, I want you to know. But those came, actually, the poinsettias were grown by our own ag program, so we wanted to give you a sample of that, and also, Mr. Johnson, I hope that picture is big enough. All right. Tonight, I want to talk about kind of an exciting thing going on in our city, along with our school district, and that is the partnership that we're trying to form with UMKC. And I'm going to kind of hopefully take you through this. The proposal was really to start with the eastern Jackson County Quarter. And when we did research, we looked at the growth in the area, and we felt like it had enough to substantiate, hopefully, eventually, a satellite facility with UMKC. And we feel it's important for Blue Springs Schools and the city because it gives visibility for a college to be in our community, and it gives us a reason to be able to collaborate from high school to the university, thus improving our school district and our community. And it gives our students some defined pathways, and also, it lets our adults continue the path of being lifelong learners. And we really want to expand our college dual credit with UMKC, and we feel like they have been exceptional partners, not that any other university hasn't been an exceptional partner also. And when we looked at our focused career pathways, we looked at entrepreneurship along with business, computer science, which we have with Project Lead the Way in our advanced computer classes, engineering with Project Lead the Way, legal, medical, dental, and education, along with the arts. When we looked at the possibilities for UMKC, we looked at broadcast, because we have not only a radio station, but a TV station, and we're very proud of Channel 15. We also wanted to gain the expertise of our visiting professors from UMKC and help them set up the class so that we can make more college experiences for our high school students. Also, the summer of UMKC, we would work with UMKC for providing camps and other experiences that would be on campus at UMKC, to really give our students time to explore and see what college life is like. We looked at all of the areas that UMKC really provided us, and it was unbelievable. And with the help of the mayor, we were able to bring UMKC to Blue Springs to do this presentation, and also to talk about the added opportunities that will be coming our Where would we house this class to start with? Well, we'd start at Paul Consilio Center, which would give them visibility and kind of the appropriate signage that we're hoping they'll bring with it. We showed this also. We see eventually a sign on the interstate coming with UMKC, Blue Springs Campus. And keeping that in mind, here's the introduction, and here's really why I'm here. So thank you for allowing me a few minutes. We are starting our first class. It is for adults and for our high school students. It is starting January 19th, starts on Tuesdays, 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. I was very fortunate to talk to the professor who will be orchestrating this class. I will say that it was exciting, it's going to be a great class, and the opportunities that could come from here, along with networking, we believe, are going to be unbelievable. So with that in mind, we are asking for money, I hate to say this, but we are coming forth to ask for money to help support some students and even some adults who might be interested in taking this course. Currently, we have about 21 students enrolled. We're very excited about that. Those include not only students, but adults. And we also have figured out the textbook situation, so we think we're ready to go. We've looked at the site, and we couldn't be more proud of the city and the school district to have this happen. So do you have any questions?
I know that a number of businesses have already contributed to the program. I know Lead Bank, for one, has sponsored some scholarships. And who are some of the people that have stepped up to the plate?
Okay, the Blue Springs Chamber, Blue Springs Schools Foundation, Grow Blue Springs, we've had Lunar Bowl, we've had the Rotary, and we've also had a citizen, Lyle Shaver, step up as well. Tomorrow, we are actually, we've invited representatives from each of these organizations to come and help us decide on the scholarships, to read through them. And we're just very excited about this opportunity.
So what is your ask? Just whatever the council chooses to participate, is whatever the council chooses to contribute to the program?
Of course, we would be very happy if the council decided to contribute at all, but we do have an amount in mind.
Okay. I kind of figured that.
But just remember these beautiful poinsettias.
By no means is that a bribe, Councilman.
No, no, that would not be taken that way.
We're in a festive spirit of the season.
We are in a giving spirit, and we are in a merry spirit, so that would be, you know, of course, we would like to see a $2,000 commitment, but we realize everybody has a budget, and they also have needs as well. We appreciate any support, but Mayor, we want to thank you because you've been very instrumental in helping us along the way.
We don't have a resolution present tonight, but if the council so choose, you could, by way of a motion, do that, and staff would prepare whatever is necessary to make that happen.
Your Honor, a comment if I could, real quick, sorry. I always thought it was a shame that when we lost the community college or our colleges that we had here in Blue Springs, and it was one of the aspects that was, I think, was a good thing we had in town, and for their reasons, they moved out, so always felt that that was something we were lacking, and now it looks like maybe we're on a path to get some of that back. And I will leave the motion to you.
And I would echo, I would echo Councilman Edmondson's thoughts. I think it's exciting to think we could see UMKC exit on Blue Springs. I think that'd be wonderful, be a positive thing for our community. So I would like to make a motion that we do allocate the $2,000 for this project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion from any of the council? I'm hearing from the left, can I hear from the right? No, not up on the right, and he speaks.
I just seconded.
Well, yes, we did hear from the right.
I thirded.
Any discussion from the council before we take a vote? Okay, seeing none. There's a motion to contribute $2,000, and there's a second. No further discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All in, same sign. Motion carries. And as just kind of a side note, in all my studies, and especially as we go to National League of Citizens and talk, most successful innovative things happen in communities that have a facility, an institution of higher education. And we thought we had that with the University to the east. It just did not quite work out, but it would still carry the name University of Missouri, but more significantly, the University of Missouri-Kansas City, which probably would be more pronounced in this area than a facility that's 120 miles away. So anyway, thank you, Dr. Segal, and it was my pleasure and honor to be involved in starting this process.
I appreciate it, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Fowler.
Yes, your, congratulations on this, working with UMKC. There is a lot of graduates in this area that appreciate that, that together in this like that. Thanks for the poinsettias. Thanks for Blue Springs South Jaguars, too, winning the state title again this year, so.
Thank you. I'd like to take the money and run, but I actually have another presentation.
We understand, we understand. You can listen to the rest of it on audio. Okay, that moves us to introduction and reading of Bill 4403, amending Chapter 700, Water and Sewers.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4403, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, by adding Section 700.230 to ban the use of lead materials in public and private drinking water plumbing.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All in, same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4403, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, by adding Section 700.230 to ban the use of lead materials in public and private drinking water plumbing.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4576.
That brings us to Merrill announcements, and tonight's will be a statement and then some congratulatory comments. Let us not forget, 73 years ago today, 1941, December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day, we had 2,403 Americans killed by a surprise attack by the Japanese. And as we look around and we see things happening today, this should be a good reminder that we don't know. The people in San Bernardino, sitting there celebrating the holiday luncheon, had no idea that day. They were surprised. So we always have to be very vigilant in our surroundings, in protecting our loved ones, in protecting those people around us. So again, let Pearl Harbor be a reminder what things that can happen. It was five years before I was born, but it's still real pronounced to all of us. Next, the congratulatory comments I want to make. Councilman Fowler already started out with part of it, with Blue Springs South Jaguar Football Team, state champions. And as I listened to some of the comments and read some things, each time, they beat CBC, Christian Brothers, and I don't know what the other C.
College.
Oh, yeah, college. Yeah, we playing college people and beating them. They are kind of the rockhursts, what Rockhursts used to be in the Kansas City area, where they actually can go out and recruit people from different communities, and you have to stick within the people that live in your district, so. We've done real well in Blue Springs as it relates to football, and I commonly say the state championship goes through Blue Springs, either the Jaguars or the Wildcats. And we started a long time tradition in doing that. The next thing is not just the football team, but the Blue Springs School District have bands among the nation's elite. The marching band for both Blue Springs School Districts have outstanding season. The Jaguar Pride brought home the first place trophy at the Central Methodist University Band Day Parade, as well as first place at the University of Central Missouri Festival of Champions. The Jaguar Pride received many honors throughout the marching season for outstanding drumline and color guard. And the drumline actually was participated in the spirit of carrying concert that I've emceed for the last 15 of the 17 years, and it was at Blue Springs South this year. But the Blue Springs High School Golden Regiment show, subliminal, proved to be one of the best in the nation. The Golden Regiment, 10th in the nation at the band of America's grand national championship, the highest finish by any Missouri school band in the history of the competition. Additionally, the Golden Regiment received a first place finish at the Renegade Review Marching Band Championship, and third place at the Bands of America Super Regional. So the bands are doing extremely well. And I tell you, too, those choirs can sing. And academically, we rank among the best, not only in the state, but in the nation. So those are drawing cards, and the reason Blue Springs is so great is because of the participation of the school districts, and very little have changed since I moved here almost 42 years ago. 42 years ago, Eloise and I moved our family to Blue Springs because of two reasons. Number one was education, and number two was affordable housing. We could get a house that I could afford, which isn't saying much back then, that I couldn't afford a whole lot, but we ended up getting a brand-new house. The other thing that y'all might be interested in, and you had a part in, I know I participated in, and some of you also participated in, is I want to read you a letter from Eric Walker. National Church Residences, and it's addressed to me, but it applies to all of you. Dear Mayor Ross, I just want to take a second to personally thank you on behalf of the National Church Residence and Friendship Manor Apartments for your continued support of our application and project. As I'm sure you've heard, we finally, we were finally funded by MHDC, and are going to be able to move forward with the complete renovation of Friendship Manor. This funding will allow for the great project and community to go through an amazing transformation that will allow these seniors of Blue Springs proud to call it their home. Without your support and extra steps that you took to back the project, none of this would have been possible. Again, I want to thank you and look forward to seeing and hearing from you and speak to you at the re-grand opening of the Friendship Manor in 2017. And for those of y'all that saw the renderings of this new renovated facility, it's going to fit right into all the decor that's happening downtown Blue Springs. So thanks to all of you that participated in it, because it was in dire need of some attention, both inside and outside. And we're just happy that you all and we had a part in making that happen. That concludes my comments. Four thoughts to ponder this evening. And next, we have, we'll go to visitors, and I have DJ Good, who I would like to address to council.
Good evening, Mayor. I wanted to address, wanted to actually come in and meet in person Eric Johnson. I've had some communications with Chief of Police Wayne McCoy and Eric Johnson, and I wanted to address to the City Council the speed limit on Jefferson Street, east of Adams Dairy Parkway. I feel it's a public safety issue. In talking with the public safety, city and city administrator, there's never been a engineering study on that stretch. The surrounding communities all have a 45 mile an hour speed limit. It's at 35, and it was brought up that, since there was never any engineering study done on it, that engineering judgment is to be used. I will tell you, I have access to state, state district engineers for the Highway Department. HDR, Dean Truman from the University of Kansas City, Missouri, has offered his input, if we would like it, at no charge to the city. I feel it is a public safety issue at 35 miles an hour. And we've actually added a couple signs. I know, thank you for putting one of those electronic signs on there. One of the times, I've been on that road a total of four times. The second time I was on it, I came down the road at 35 miles an hour, stayed on my brakes so I would not exceed the speed limit, and four cars that followed me off that intersection, somebody in that train honked their horn at me. And then the next, on the way back from Grain Valley, because I was coming back from Grain Valley, a truck passed me on the double-yellow lines. It's a matter of public safety, I was maintaining my 35 miles an hour speed limit. I did have the pleasure of, why I was introduced to this was that I met one of the Blue Springs finest, pulling me over to tell me that there were, that there's been numerous complaints of, of, about the speed limit on that. Yet I contacted Kohl's, I contacted Camper World, they've never complained. There's nobody else out there. Engineering studies, my engineering judgment, conversations with outside parties, they would love to, to do this on behalf of public safety in the city of Blue Springs.
Okay. Any questions from the council? You know, one of the things that we can do, and I know you've had conversation with the chief, you've had conversations with our city administrator and our public works director, and certainly, safety is a concern that we have in Blue Springs, and a lot of time, that safety is probably people going too fast, rather than too slow. But, you know, one of the things that we could possibly do is an additional step, is refer this to the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board and have them take a look at it. These are citizens that are appointed by me and approved by the council, and they vet a different issues as they come before the city. And so I think that's what would be, my call would be, refer this to the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board and have them take a look at it and see what they, if they think it should be raised, or if they think that it should remain the same.
And I do have standing offers from multiple third-party, you're probably familiar with HDR, the engineering firm, UMKC, obviously, the dean of the School of Engineering there, as well as district engineers from MODOT that would love to retire.
And one of the keys with that is, is I appreciate those outside parties, but if something happens within the limits of Blue Springs, they're not responsible, I and this city council are responsible.
No, it would just be a third-party. It would be a third-party that is obviously credentialed.
Right.
Very well credentialed, so.
Mr. Johnson.
First of all, Mr. Good, nice to meet you in person. We have exchanged several emails, and I believe this particular, just to give the council a little more context, this particular issue, I think, has been first place at our doorstep back in July, is that correct?
Yeah, I can't remember exactly.
And we've had a number of different people evaluate, because the speed limit does go from 45 to 35 when you get to Blue Springs. And frankly, I've had numerous conversations with the police chief and with Chris Sandy, the Director of Public Works. Chris is not here tonight, and I do not have a recommendation from them to change the speed limit, which is why essentially, Mr. Good and I have agreed to disagree, which is what has allowed and led him to come here tonight to make the case. Certainly don't have any issues with redirecting this to the Citizens Public Safety Advisory Board, but unless there's new information or something that comes forward, I'm not certain that Chief McCoy or Chris Sandy are going to have a different recommendation going to that board than where we are today. Mr. Good has offered to use his contacts in the business world to help facilitate an analysis of this. We historically have used Trans Systems as our engineering expert to help us evaluate this, and frankly, I didn't want to spend any money with that firm when I didn't have a strong recommendation from the chief of police or from the public works director that we needed to change this. There are a lot of variables and factors that go into determining the limits that are established, and I find it ironic that here, we're debating about increasing the speed limit. There's a park in this stretch of area, there are people who, there's a bicycle lane, jogging lanes, there's the entrance into Kohl's with semi-traffic, and there are, it's a different environment than what you have in Grain Valley. So we've taken all of those things into consideration and have communicated with Mr. Good, but if this group would like us to do another analysis and redirect it to the Public Safety Advisory Board, we're happy to do that, and don't have an issue with that.
Mr. Mayor, I would support that action as well. I know the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board have reviewed non-parking, you know, lots of traffic issues, and then being citizens and residents, that would be affected by this and contribute to that park. Hopefully, they would be able to take a closer look at it with the chief's input and Chris Sandy's input, and be able to at least make a recommendation. It's not a binding recommendation from them, but it would give us more information by which to make that decision. So I would support that action.
Anyone else? Without objection, we will refer to the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board for their vetting of the issue.
Is that something I would attend, or?
It would be open to you. It's a public, it's a public meeting, it's open to the public, and we'll, we'll make you aware of when the meeting is scheduled.
You got my comment.
And I'll just have Chief McCoy follow up with you.
Okay.
Keep you in contact.
Appreciate it.
The meeting we would get to, in fact, would be the second Tuesday in January.
The second Tuesday in January. And you will meet at the City Hall?
We'll email you the dates.
Well, before we make a commitment that it goes in January, we need to, we need to consult with Chris Sandy and his team and determine whether or not there's any information that we need to gather to help make that a meaningful and productive meeting.
Well, yeah, and let me know if we can push it off till February, if I need to, if you'd like me to get some research or anything from our end. So thank you.
So DJ can work it through the chief?
We'll refer to Chairman Eckert in a little bit.
Okay, so someone will let you know.
Thank you.
All right. I don't have any other speaker appearance forms. That being the case, I would accept, I will, oh, that's right, thank you.
You did something right tonight.
You did something right. You got your name printed, too.
Yes, they're all five-year. I'm going to take pictures of you.
Are you going to take pictures? Someone will go there and find you.
Sure, if you'd like, with a fancy camera.
All right. We got one other order business we need to do before we refer to the mayor's session. Okay, I'm going to add, Councilman L. Carter, Chris Levesey, and Jeff Quabell to join me. First, I want to give you this little book, this has got your name on it. What about that? You want to record this, huh?
Behind you.
We're singing, yeah? For a trio.
Ready?
I missed the memo.
Want to know what song we're singing?
I don't.
I don't either, so anyway. We're going to go ahead and proceed, we're going to go ahead and proceed with the.
Mayor, I think it says, Happy Anniversary?
We have three of our council members, not all of them are actually serving five years, but after you've served five years, you are, no, you have earned a payout pin, and I wear mine quite a bit. It's a service pin, an award for five years. And we want to present that to each one of you, and I'm going to give you this little cover back, and you can stick it back in there however you want to. Would you be the keeper of that? Very good, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem has a duty to fulfill. Those are very nice, yes. Is that a diamond in there? Oh, man. That'll blind you. So anyway, we just want to congratulate. We just want to congratulate each one of you on your five-year service pin, and we look forward to presenting your 10-year service pin at some time. So you all have any comments about your service?
It's been a great seven years, in my case.
It's been a great five years, I'm only. Five years for me, too.
Congratulations. Let's get them a round of applause. Oh, that's right, we got to get a picture of you. Do you want to hold that? And Councilman Fowler is getting close to his 25-year pin. What is it, in a couple of years, next year?
2017.
2017. It'll be 25 years. It'll be 25 years. And early next year, I get my 15-year. Yeah. We're on the move. And on the right track. Okay. Our legal counsel?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, an appropriate motion would be to move that this body go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 Subparagraph 1, Rev. Statutes of Missouri, for the purpose of having confidential and privileged communications between a governmental body or its representatives and its attorney relating to legal action, causes of action, or litigation involving this body and legal advice, that any votes, minutes, documents, and other records discussed or taken during the closed session remain closed, and that this body stand adjourned at the completion of such session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Sorry. Councilman Carter? I'm sorry.
I got my pin here, you know.
I need to respect the pin. I apologize.
Aye.
Councilman Carter. Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Okay, we're going to take about a two or three-minute recess and allow our visitors to be excused, and then we will go into executive session.